Please be seated councillors. Good afternoon councillors, welcome to the Budget Setting Borough Council Meeting for Thursday of the twenty-third of February twenty twenty-three. We'll move on to agenda item one which is apologies for absence and I've received apologies from councillors Browns, Griffiths and Lee Holmes. Do we have any other apologies?
Yes.
Thank you councillor Corley. Okay, thank you. Agenda item two is to receive declarations of interest. Do any councillors have any declarations of interest that they wish to make? Also, the green, oh, sorry councillor Oms.
Resets and fire authority membership.
Okay, thank you. The green form will be circulated as well if councillors wish to add anything in relation to declarations of interest. Item three is the budget proposals for twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. I will now move over to, hand over to councillor Glynn Nightingale who will propose these budget proposals.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move the recommendations in the budget report and the amendments circulated throughout the council this afternoon. First of all, I want to thank the resources directorate staff for all their splendid work in preparing the budget. Today, we make the most serious decision in the Borough Council's calendar and that's to set a balanced budget. Our objectives are that the budget embodies what we want to achieve through the corporate plan, namely protecting vulnerable people and the environment, improving prosperity in jobs and the area's appearance. It's about equality of life, equal opportunity and public service. Our corporate plan achievements over the past four years are considerable. Major investments in Redcar, Loftus and Gisborough, initiatives to tackle climate change, the preservation of library services and the launch of community hubs, just over twenty-three million pounds of the driving change efficiencies made, keeping council tax within realistic bounds to preserve services with a zero increase last year, introducing working from home and rationalising council assets, ending an expensive major PFI and taking ownership of three council buildings, completion of the Regent and Kirkleetham War Garden, protecting green spaces and many, many more achievements. But, like all areas of local government, Redcar and Cleveland Council faces severe challenges and unprecedented economic difficulties. First, the Covid pandemic and its long-term consequences for council finances and services. Second, the economic consequences of the trust government which forced up borrowing costs. And thirdly, Putin's war in Ukraine and its devastating impact on inflation and supply chains. All councils over recent years, like all councils over recent years, Redcar and Cleveland is forced to respond to several imperatives in local government finance. First, continually growing needs of vulnerable children and adults that the council cannot say no to. Massive financial pressures mean this now takes up fifty-eight per cent of the revenue budget. Secondly, inflationary pressures not seen for forty years. Thirdly, a hundred million pounds found through savings and cost avoidance. Fourthly, the government's determination to shift the burden of taxation, which means local council taxpayers paying around, who were paying around sixteen per cent of the revenue budget in the early two thousands and now paying for sixty per cent of that budget. To shift the burden of taxation further, the government now expects all councillors to increase council tax by five per cent. And seventy-nine per cent of councillors are complying, putting up council tax by five per cent. To deal with these pressures, this government's grant in no way whatsoever matches the money needed to deal with service demands, cost and inflationary pressures or aspirations for the future developments. The budget today is focused on council tax. There are a number of options. First, anyone proposing a council tax rise below one point nine nine per cent needs to disclose what alternative budget they actually plan and must say what services will be cut. It would be unwise to plunder our limited reserves. They're already stretched and the council would face possible censure from auditors. Next, a zero council tax increase would only be possible with even more massive cuts and that cannot and will not, we are, we cannot and will not be prepared to do that. So, Mr Mayor, we propose a two per cent increase in the adult social care preset which is accepted as a moral duty and a one point nine per cent increase in council tax. This is lower than current inflation, lower than many councils in the region, lower than seventy-nine per cent of councils nationally and it is less than the five per cent maximum expected by the government. In this context, the council is doing all it can to mitigate the impact of the cost of living challenges with additional support for environment, for economically vulnerable households. Just one example, the three point nine per cent increase would equate to eight per cent a year for someone in band A on full council tax support. But the twenty-five pound discount for all council tax support claimants reduces this to a seventeen pound reduction overall. The extension of the household support fund for next year will give extra financial support payments to economically vulnerable households next year to ensure benefits are taken up by everyone who's entitled to them. Not only will details be published in the council's website, the magazine and in a special leaflet, but I've asked officers to plan benefits roadshows across the borough. Above all, we are not prepared as an administration to risk putting Redcar and Cleveland into a situation of three southern councils. Because of poor financial management, residents in Conservative Thurrock face a ten per cent council tax hike, in Conservative Croydon a fifteen per cent council tax hike and in Labour Slough a ten per cent hike. We do not intend to risk the long-term financial sustainability of the council and that's why it is vital we must address the issue now, not at some time in the future. We must avoid asking local people to pick up the sort of council tax bill that residents in Thurrock, Croydon and Slough face and the horrendous consequences of special measures. We are making sure that this is not on the cards. As Borough councillors, we have a collective duty to ensure the council has sufficient resources to provide the services local people need and to do the job that we need to do. We have a legal duty to work in the financially real, reality of here and now. But members should make no mistake, the future is far from rosy and what is happening to local council finances across the country is not a simple one-year blip. That's why we have to make sure we're on top of this for the future and that's why we propose a necessary, prudent and common sense budget. Obviously, we regret increasing council tax, but the blame rests with the government. They've created economic chaos, have produced intolerable situation for local government finances and have no plans to sort out the problems local government faces. Ultimately, I hope we've made it clear that what we propose is totally justifiable both for now and for the future. It's in the interest of the borough and local residents who rely on our services. It's for the greater good in a far from easier situation. It's vital that as responsible councillors, we make rational and realistic decisions and I commend the budget, Mr Mayor, to the council for approval.
Thank you councillor Nightingale, do I have a second here please?
That, Mr Mayor, reserve the right to speak.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Now, open it up for debate and our first councillor to speak is councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to councillor Nightingale for introducing the report. I think one thing we'll probably hear a lot today from members, possibly from both sides, is that there is no alternative or there's very little alternative. And personally, my own view is that on the revenue budget, I don't think that's far from wrong. This council's faced with a number of impossible choices. We're aware of the context councillor Nightingale's told us of it, over a hundred million pounds lost from this council over the last decade plus, since twenty-ten, so a bit longer, over a thousand staff lost from this council, which has led to these impossible choices that we're faced with today. Basically, we have a choice between three things, it appears, raise council tax to the maximum and councillor Nightingale has given the reasons why the council's not proposing to do that, raise fees and charges or introduce new ones, which we've had the previous debate about and not doing that will cost this council three hundred and forty thousand pounds this year, but it seems to be the will of the public and the community that we do not. Or option three, which I'm thankful seems to be the option, is to use reserves to plug the gap while the council looks perhaps more deeply over the next year, the medium term, in order to make longer term savings. And I'm glad this administration has used reserves, particularly given some of the concerns that were raised about using reserves during my own administration with councillor Jeffrey, I'm pleased to see that you've come round to our way of thinking. However, despite all of this with the revenue budget where I think there's little alternative, I do think that there is an alternative when it comes to the capital budget, which is also part of the papers today. The capital, the capital budget isn't as stretched as the revenue budget, this council has an authorised limit of external debt of three hundred and one million pounds, this council currently has long-term debt of two hundred and fifty-four million pounds, there is space in the capital budget and the reason I'll be abstaining from the budget vote today is because of the fact that I think that more could have been done for the town that I represent, which is Aston. I am well aware that the, that national government has said no to Aston and I think that's where most of the blame clearly lies here. The levelling up bid that we had for Aston, which included Aston Baths, which the council is now going to fund, but also My Ward, included Aston Precinct and Aston Square, failed with national government despite the overwhelming need of our communities. However, prior to the levelling up bid going in, this council previously had five million pounds of its own money in terms of the capital programme to fund Aston Precinct. This was taken out with the hope that one day we would get this central government funding, unfortunately, we have not. However, myself last year along with councillor Vince Smith tried to put back into our capital programme this five million pounds for Aston, which also would have attracted an extra two million pounds just under from the combined authority. Unfortunately, myself and councillor Smith were defeated last year, which is why I'm not suggesting to bring a motion today because I know I will be defeated again. However, I can't vote for the budget on the basis of the capital programme, but I do commend the position you've arrived at in terms of the revenue budget.
Thank you councillor Massey, councillor Watts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Today we are presented with a budget described as balanced and sustainable, but in my view it's not. As I previously remarked, it is the same old, same old, fees and charges, council tax reserves and in this case more from reserves. They should be addressing the whole system. Cabinet's attempts to increase fees and charges failed spectacularly and their rehash of this was criticised by Monday's special budget resource scrutiny meeting as members came up with several alternatives but too late to change the cabinet's view. After a poor response from my question to the cabinet member for children's services at a council meeting on the twelfth of January, when I pointed out that the balance of non-statutory money spent on children's services was well over what ordinary families can afford, what with massive increases in inflation, fuel, mortgage costs and entry, increased use of food banks, the only answer I got was, everybody has a holiday, I don't. Given my background, I took it upon myself to look into the non-stat finances of children's services with no assistance from the cabinet member or director, just using the budget book. I made savings of hundreds of thousands of pounds. I also reckoned in line with the council's policy of reassessing its buildings, Tuned In is failing its potential and I advised it should close, but I disagree with the council's policy of selling assets. Better to lease asset buildings and live on an income rather than sell and in the present business climate, businesses do not want high, um, high story buildings and so floor by floor leases would be more beneficial use of the building. The engineers department are in disarray at present and understaffed. When we disagree, oh, and outside consultants costing thousands of pounds are brought in for every decision we make. When we disagree with budget proposals, we are told, will you draw the budget? I have only drawn up a little, but this and the ideas coming from the recent resource scrutiny suggests there are many ideas coming from council members. Would the cabinet member, um, as well as keeping appropriate scrutinies in touch with relevant financial details, provide the resource scrutiny with overall details of departments' expenditure throughout the, the year in the hope that members' ideas can in future be included in the budget?
Thank you councillor Watts, councillor Wells. Councillor Wells, can you put your mic on please so we can hear what you're saying? Thank you.
Not supporting this proposed budget, before imposing even more financial pressure on our residents, I think we need to put our own house in order and run it as a business. When a business is unable to meet its budget requirements, it has to adjust, it cannot just raise prices because it will lose custom, it has to examine how it runs and then cut out the waste and unnecessary spending. Each year, some departments come back to this council with an overspend and this will continue until the problem is addressed. Unfortunately, when these overspends occur, the answer from this authority seems to be put up the council tax. This means we are passing the problem on to all our residents who are already struggling financially. There's a number of things councillor Nightingale said, the council's facing severe financial challenges, so are our residents and I'm here to represent the residents, not the council. And I think all of you should look to yourselves and say, who are you representing? Redcar and Cleveland Council are your residents. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Wells. Councillor Vince Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll start off with the good part, I'd like to congratulate the coalition for listening to the consultation feedback in dropping the proposed fees and charges, the large increases in sum and many new parking charges. Thank you also for the proposed investment in Aston Pool, but that is where things need to be really looked at. The council should be working with the budget they have to deliver what people actually are asking for and that is a replacement pool and a learner pool and not just the replacement pool. On the Aston precinct, it was supposed to be a coalition priority to regenerate Aston Centre, but it took over eighteen months to bring a report to cabinet with a commitment of four point nine million plus two million pounds from the combined authority. This included seven hundred and seventy-four thousand pounds remaining from the last administration. Very slow progress was made however, as the real, real priorities lay in Redcar and Loftus. A little over a year later, the money was pulled from the this year's budget. We were told not to worry, the level up fund is riding to the rescue, but we know how that turned out. We, we put a motion forward last year to restore the money, but we obviously failed and with councillor Massey and I'd like to say that the very least that this council should do is restore the seven hundred and seventy-four thousand pounds that was left for Aston back into their budget. Over twenty-four years of false hope and failed promises for the people of Aston. If I'm still here after the May elections, I'll continue to fight for Aston Centre regeneration, but we'll see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Smith. Councillor Bill Clark.
Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. Thanks very much councillor Chris Massey for letting me in with levelling up because this government is letting down us all, councils, national institutions and particularly residents. I'm going to mention my yearly speech about council tax levels and a council tax band D in Gisborough, which is a parish area, this year is two thousand one hundred and seventeen pounds and ninety-five pence. The average council tax band D across London though is only one thousand seven hundred and one pounds and forty-five pence. So that means in London, it's only four hundred and sixteen pounds fifty cheaper than what we have to, you know, pay up here in Gisborough. So, you know, when you talk about levelling up, let's level that part up and what about the second part that I always go on about? So in London, if you're sixty plus, you can get a London Oyster photo card which gives you free travel on bus, tube, tram, certain London overgrounds, the Docklands Light, railway, et cetera. But here we are in the North East who nobody cares about from central government and I would have you got to be just to get a free bus pass, you've got to be sixty-six. And here we are with, I, I understand, less of a life expectancy than they have down the South. But I'm going to stick with government policy on this, about this vote I'm going to take today, because we must drive down inflation. There's no doubt in my mind that that's the root of all these evils. This government's has been pretty pathetic at what it's been trying to do and it's not pleasing anybody and rule on that general election. So I'm afraid I can't recognise and, you know, accept this recommendation, but central government, they've got to step up and recognise its responsibilities. They're the ones who are the culprits and it ain't going to be me who's a councillor on this council who's letting the residents down, it is central government. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Clark, councillor Hanaway.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Nightingale says that we have to deal with the here and now. I've been doing some sums. Reportedly, the average earning in Redcar and Cleveland is thirty thousand. That's thirty-three thousand for a man and twenty-six and a half for a woman. So let's imagine this hypothetical woman on the average salary with two children and we'll imagine her as a lone parent, which ten per cent, nearly ten per cent of our households are now. So we can see the effects of the average costs on that level of income, which of course is an income too high for the kind of support that we give or for free school meals or for anything like that. So after tax and national insurance, we've got twenty-one and a half thousand or eighteen hundred per month. We read that the average family is spending now a third of its income on mortgage payments. So that takes us down to twelve hundred. So we plan to take a hundred and sixty in council tax a month if it was over the twelve months rather than collected in ten months. We'll take that down to a hundred and twenty when we apply the single person's allowance. So now it's one thousand and eighty. The average energy bill is now two and a half thousand a year and that's due to go up in April. So let's take off another two hundred a month, that leaves eight hundred and eighty. I read, it's quite difficult to believe, but apparently with inflation, the average food bill for a family of three is six hundred pounds and that takes us to two hundred and eighty and the average car costs two hundred and twenty pounds a month to run. So in this hypothetical example, that leaves her sixty pounds a month for everything else, everything else. You know, our clothes, shoes, toiletries, school trips and including the fourteen per cent rise for broadband and five per cent increase in water rates. And that's even before we get to the long-lost idea of saving some money. The Joseph Roundtree Foundation in two thousand and six said that two million households were struggling to pay their council tax. That's two thousand and six, so that's before the crash, before austerity, before Brexit, before Covid. We've often heard of the squeezed middle, perhaps we should now call them the suffocated middle because that's just not a viable situation. We need a plan to support those in the middle because when, when I read this budget, it seems to be based on an assumption that's out of date now, that it's not just the most vulnerable that we think of as the most vulnerable. Councillor Nightingale said that everyone who's economically vulnerable will, you know, who's eligible for support, you know, will get it. But the assumption is that those, that the average citizen can absorb some of this increase. Now, we know the comfortable and the affluent can absorb it, but I think we're no longer now in a situation where the suffocated middle can absorb it. So I can't support the budget, but I feel that my vote against is not really a vote against your efforts, it's not intended to be. I know that in social services, you're doing the best you can with extremely limited resources. There are some other areas where I would agree with councillor Watts about the use of consultants who don't seem to come up with what they are supposed to. But of course, the real central fact is the, is the disgustingness of the government letting alone their, their gas company that just made three, over three billion profits and also the level of tax evasion and avoidance in this country is seventy billion, seven zero billion. So to insist that this higher council funding comes from this average resident, from her sixty pounds remaining of disposable income is just completely unacceptable. If we do this and we do take, you know, it goes up next year and the year after and the year after, what we're risking is putting families like that in the situation where they have the social problems that we need the money in the first place to pay for. We've got into a vicious circle and I, I don't feel I can support a vicious circle. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hanaway. Councillor Lanigan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I absolutely understand councillor Hanaway, what you're actually saying there and the other speakers that we've got. The problem that we've got is, what do we do? Do we cut services to the bone? Do we cut and cut and cut in order to avoid a one point nine council tax? We didn't put the rise on last year because we could see what was coming here, we are trying and I actually agree with you because it's that middle band of people that are going to suffer with this, but this is not the fault of Redcar and Cleveland Council. This is the fault of, of the government and we're not going to get any money from them and we're not getting the money that we need this year and we won't get the money that we need next year going forward with this and we've got to manage with what we've got. So if we don't put one point nine nine on the council tax, which services are we going to cut? Where are we going to cut? Because that means that the residents out there don't get the services and I'm the last person, probably all the same, nobody wants to put council tax up. But what we've actually done and councillor Massey was actually saying about that, and we looked at the reserves to see if we could do that. And we've taken that option going forward. But we either, we either go with this or come back with an alternative and we'll cut services. If that, if this goes on and we can't get this budget through today, they will step in and they will put it up to five percent. And then, and then where are we with that? I actually spoke to the Tees Valley leaders yesterday and had a meeting with them. Right across the Tees Valley, the five percent, well, they're not, four point nine nine and four point nine because they've got to do that. They're actually admiring Redcar and Cleveland for getting it down to three point nine nine with the adult services on there. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to help a little bit. It's either we go with this or we cut. We cut services and then they haven't got anything out there. You know that we can't cut children's services. You know where we are at the moment. And I know passionate councillor Watts is with this, but it's statutory. And the councils that have been here for all the time that you've been here for each thing, you can't do that. So the most vulnerable people that we've got are children coming into care and our elderly. And there's nothing we can cut with that. And councillor Nightingale was explaining to you, that's fifty-odd percent and more of the budget that this council's got. There was no money coming in from central government. We haven't got what the promise that we would get last November. And you're not going to get it next year and probably the year after. So where does that leave the council and where does that leave residents? Cut services, cut it to a minimum. And I understand what councillor Smith said about Eston. And it was a promise of this administration. And I do take on board councillor Massey, what you've said about the capital budget and, and where there is in there. As we inbound to Eston, need doing, that has gone up astronomically. I think we're in at nearly eleven million coming in for that. But the people of Eston deserve that. Because they haven't had a pool and this is going to be what we can do. And that's money that this council's borrowed. So what do we do? Just say, right, well, we won't do that and we won't put any council tax up. And how does that affect the people in Eston? Badly, because they need that. And it's not, it's for mental health, it's for their health, it's for everything else that we've got there. I'm hoping that the majority of you support this going forward. Otherwise, we can go back to the drawing board and we can cut services. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Anigan. councillor Sue Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Where do I start? I know, let's begin with the last thirteen years of nasty cuts that were imposed or have been imposed and continue to be imposed by the Tory government. They've made the rich richer and the poor poorer. And we have a lot of poor people in this borough. But I, unlike colleagues in here, am not going to let this administration off the hook. Because as far as I'm concerned, your four-year tenure of this council has been about chaos and incompetence. And the reason we have this budget in front of us today is the combination of Tory cuts and the work that you have failed to do. And councillor Nightingale talks about a balanced budget, but we haven't got a balanced budget, have we councillor Nightingale? We're currently forecasting a six million deficit for this year, never mind the budget years. The budget years, despite the council tax increase and cuts of six point five million, are still going to leave us with a deficit of two point five million next year that will have to be plugged by reserves and deficits in each of the four years following that. So there is no balanced budget. But I just want to spend a little bit of time looking at some of the services in detail. Let's look at children's to start with. I know councillor Watts has had her concerns about that. But I actually think children's services is, is one of our key services to invest. It's our investment in our future. Getting our young people the best start in life is the most important thing to do. But what are you cutting? You're cutting the youth service, you're cutting family hubs, you're cutting youth justice, you're cutting transport to school, you're cutting youth school crossing patrols and you're cutting support for care leavers. And of those, the thing that I care about most is youth services because that's what makes the difference. That's what takes the children off our streets. That's what gives them a good start. And okay, you're not taking out any, any money in, in the coming year, but you are the year after. Two hundred thousand pounds' worth of cuts to our youth services that are already on their needs. And let's move on to communities, shall we? What's being cut there? Councillors' ward alliances, public realm work, support to parish councillors, support to the voluntary sector, support for our employees through their trade union posts. All small amounts of cash that allow and encourage local democracy and engagement and actually makes a real difference to our communities. Spend that is not at the behest of the cabinet and committees, but it's driven by local people, all cuts. How short sighted is that? And what about the chaos of the fees and charges fiasco? Car parking bins, bus passes, just a small sample of what you were planning to put increases on. And the leader moved at the December cabinet meeting that all those should go through. It was only the intervention of Labour that actually stopped that nonsense. And the fact is, that nonsense was subsequent, that decision was subsequently supported by three thousand odd residents who responded to our consultation, the most ever. How could this administration ever think that that schedule of fees and charges would do anything other than damage the economy of this borough and yet, and yet you let it come forward? I, I just want to talk a couple of minutes about income because I think that's really important. Income from the Tees work site is where we're hoping to get it from. The leader has promised us time and time again, she's got that under control and she can do it. She's not only leader of this council, she's leader of the, she has positions of power and control on the South East Development Corporation Board, the TVCA Board, the Freeport Board, a unique opportunity, I think the peer review team said. But we've seen none of those business rates. And despite the fact that the business, the Freeport Business Plan provided estimates, I've now been told that they were overestimates. And that there are so many bureaucratic hoops to jump through that we're not likely to see any best business rates from that site for at least another three years. That is an absolute disgrace, given that the ninety percent owned private joint venture partnership is already taking cash from that site and putting it into their own pockets. But despite the position of our leader, nothing is being done. Very quickly, I just want to move on to the essence of me bucks. We now have a budget for a sports village of eleven point three, sorry, eleven point one million, thanks to more prudential borrowing. That's money that's been paid for by our council taxpayers. Eleven point four of that's for the pool. That leaves a balance of one point seven million. We're told this will leverage in the one point seven, three point four million from the Football Foundation for enhanced facilities. Well, isn't that great? It seems once again we're chasing the money and not thinking about our strategic priorities and our residents when making our decisions. And I can tell you now that if Labour get elected at the next election, we will do everything we can to make sure that any cash available is put to delivering the pool facilities that people want, not towards funding a project they've never even heard of or yet alone been consulted on. So to conclude very quickly, yes, there are cuts to be made. And those cuts are being made because of the years of nasty Tory policies. But not these cuts, not the cuts set out in this budget. This budget impacts on key services in real and important ways which don't appear to have any real understanding of the hit that will be taken by local people. The elections are coming up in May and I can only hope that those responsible, both nationally and locally, for the mess this council finds itself in, are held accountable and that we never again elect people to positions of power that leave us in this situation in this council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. councillor Corley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor Jeffrey summed it up regarding the cuts that are being made to the children's services, especially around our youth services. I know a lot of my caseworks, antisocial behaviour and what I get is that the kids have nothing to do. I mean, there's quite a few bits for them to do within my ward. However, cutting youth services is one way of tackling that.
Can we have quiet, please, on the right? I would like to hear what councillor Corley is saying. Thank you.
And having our youth services is one way that we can tackle that. It gets the children involved and it makes them feel as though they're part of something. Then we go on to the council tax increase. We heard from councillor Hanaway just in real terms what that means. I can't vote for an increase when I feel that this government should be doing far more to take the burden away from the working class people of our borough. Yet again, we're having to put more pressure on them. They've got electricity, they've got gas, they've got food that's more than doubled. And then we hear that it's sixty pounds. That doesn't include the clothes, any activities that they want to. Just to take them to a park that's free, you think it's free, but then they want that ice cream and you feel bad saying no. Then we look at the administration who have increased the council tax year on year until Labour stepped in last year and asked you not to. And then the three thousand also of those people and our residents asked you not to. I think that you, what you did do and you looked at again was the fees and charges and the car parking fees and charges, not doing that. However, I can't put more pressure on my residents that are already working extremely hard to provide what they can. I don't want to see food banks bare, but that is reality. That is what's happening now. We have food banks struggling to keep stocked. We are now at a point where we need to be telling the government far more and making a bigger stance. They're providing and making the rich richer while the poor's getting poorer and that. So far, levelling up, we keep hearing as councillor Clark over there did say, it's not happening. The north and south divide is getting wider. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Corley. councillor Andrea Turner.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a difficult time for so many residents across the borough and indeed across the whole country. Worldwide events have created massive financial challenges and here in the UK is no different. For our officers to then come up with a budget that proposes a smaller increase than it could have done is a credit to them. And in many respects and on behalf of our group, I want to thank them for their efforts. I also welcome the news of the increase in council tax support for those in more challenged positions who need it most. All that said, there are still many questions that we don't believe we have complete clarity on. There are a number of areas we need to be, that need to be looked at differently in the future to ensure we are absolutely delivering the best value of money to every resident. During scrutiny, I've agreed with councillor Watts, Jeffrey and Thompson as they've challenged on issues around children's services, members' parking and discrepancies with numbers in the budget pack. I, along with all of our group and the majority of councillors in this chamber, fought to have the originally proposed fees and charges element of the budget reviewed and I am thankful it was. Longer term, we believe we must look at our whole staffing model and structure to see if there are opportunities for us to share services across local council areas to realise savings in similar ways to we do with public health. In summary, whilst I understand this budget is being proposed in good faith and in some areas out of necessity, it also has a number of areas that many will not be comfortable with. And as our group does not operate a whip system, each of our councillors will today vote as they believe their residents would want them to after weighing up all the facts they have. We hope in the next administration, we will have a review of this and all other savings strategies.
Thank you councillor Turner. councillor Ayer.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, of course, we agree, I think we all agree. It's been a difficult budget to set. And as some previous speakers have said, predominantly we can lay the blame there on this inept Tory government. Redcar Cleveland Borough Council, the government grants reduced by circa a hundred million pound a year. A dramatic impact on all services and in particular the social services side. But let's look at that. That was as circa a hundred million pound. Three hundred and thirty-three local authorities in the, in the UK. Charned that by the millions and millions of pounds that the government have stopped. It comes to quite a, a nice tidy sum, doesn't it, which goes into billions and billions of pounds. So what have the Tory government done there with the money that they've saved on that? On, but on coming locally, on the capital funding. As other speakers have spoke there within the Eston, Eston, Eston Board and the other T S six boards. Nothing has come there from the, from the capital funding. Unlike councillor Clark, he thanked there for an opening there on levelling up. Well, that's a big con as well, isn't it? When you consider levelling up, that, when you consider some of the more affluent societies in the UK, authorities in the UK have received levelling up funded at the demise of the more poorer areas. I asked the question, who are they levelling up to? Nothing has come forward there from the UK prosperity funding. And by the way, that's only guaranteed there until the year two thousand and twenty-five. This funding replaced a guaranteed funding year upon year throughout the, the UK divided up by the UK, seven UK areas. A total of three point six billion pounds. Shared out there between the seven UK areas. Plus, plus. T side area was declared by the EU as one of the three most deprived areas in the UK. That being the case, those three areas were to be allocated a share of a hundred and sixty million pounds. However, we lost that due to Brexit. And as like I said, thanks to those who voted for Brexit, which includes the hike in UK farming products that go into our, into our shops and supermarkets. Under the EU cap, UK farmers received a forty percent grant. Thanks again to Brexit, we've lost that money. Hasn't been replaced there by the, by the government. But as I say, thanks again for those who voted for Brexit. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ayer. councillor Anigan, you've already spoken in this debate. No, you can't. I think I did restrict a councillor, last borough councillor in speaking. councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is not a good time for any of us being present in the chamber today. And I'm sure that the proposal of the motion is not feeling in any way comfortable. It is a very uncomfortable time for all of us. We could continue for the rest of this afternoon criticizing central government. But they are not listening. And even if they were to listen and change their policy, it would not be in time for this council to declare a charge on its council tax. So this afternoon, we have to make a decision, however unpalatable that might be. So we've looked at fees and charges and we genuflected to ostensibly what was deemed to be public opinion. But I have to say that not all the information was in the public domain and some of the rationale for the proposals was not clear. And it is, I think, accepted that most members of this chamber would, given the chance to revisit these proposals, actually support some of those proposed fee increases. So let us actually not hide behind the politics of presence, the politics of thinking about electorates. Now, having said that, we do need to think about our electorates because we are here to represent them. But if this afternoon we choose not to agree to a budget, we all have to go away, sit down again and come back with another proposal. We have been advised that fifty-eight percent of the proposed budget is going to be devoted to supporting children and adults who need support. How can we not recognise that? There is an opportunity for those, and councillor Hanaway, I think, was very clear in guiding us about the challenges that a vast number of residents face in their own budgeting. But we do have a support fund, a household support fund available. I'm going to support the motion, Mr Mayor, but I do so with certain caveats. One is that we make absolute certain, that we turn, no, leave no stone unturned in seeking out those who need help and giving them all the support that they need financially. I share, like lots of others do, in the experience of supporting food banks and it is so evident that in the last two years in particular, the demand for food banks has increased dramatically. So, so that's nothing new in our experience. It is not acceptable, however, and we must be doing all that we can to be lobbying wherever that needs to be, at Tees Valley or at central government, to get more funding placed where there is clearly identifiable need. And if the twenty-one census does not tell us that, we need not look elsewhere. So I've spoken during the year, Mr Mayor, about the inability of our scrutiny system here to really identify all of the costs that we are incurring and not only not to identify them, but to identify them early enough in a financial year to do something about them. I did say this morning to one of the cabinet members that we are in effect making decisions at cliff edges. We should be forward planning more than we do do. I've highlighted time and time again this year that we do not have business plans in place to address our revenue spend. We are advised that for capital spend, we do scrutinize, evaluate and make decisions based on information, but we do not do that critically enough and sufficiently enough and frequently enough for our revenue spend. So we must do better. We must support those who are in need. But if we walk away today, what are the options without having taken a decision? To eat further into our reserves? To get on the telephone to central office and say, please send some more money into our account for tomorrow? No, these are decisions that are hypothetical, that we cannot really address. So unfortunately, we're faced with a decision that is highly unpalatable. I'm going to take that decision, Mayor, and support the motion with the caveats that I've hopefully briefly voiced.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Cal Quatermain.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just going to be very brief. Three hundred and fifty million pounds, so I want you to think about that amount, three hundred and fifty million. That's how much our council has had its spending power cut the last thirteen years, three hundred and fifty million pounds. Imagine what we could do with that. It's an absolute disgrace that that money's been taken away from us locally and being used by the, the government for centralized spending. We need devolution up here, we need to be in control of our budget. I'll say this, though, with this administration, I can understand you've tried hard and all that, but cutting our youth services to the bone, that's not on at all. You know, we really need that support for our youth. We know the troubles that we have on our streets, the antisocial behaviour, cuts to the police, we need our youth to be looking forward to things, you know, and we need to be supporting them in every aspect. So I can't support this budget on that, on that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Quatermain. Councillor Pallister.
Okay, Mr Mayor. Can I, can I just start by referring to what councillor Turner said about we need to look at best value? I'm sorry councillor Turner, you weren't a councillor in two thousand, well before two thousand and ten and I can remember them times and poverty, child poverty was going down, we had SRB, we had working neighbourhoods, all with them pots of funding were given, local people the opportunity to actually improve their, their areas at a local level. We had less crime, we had less children going into care, everything was looking much better. But two thousand and ten, you slashed, see, SRBs, working neighbourhoods, you slashed council budgets of over, we say a hundred million, much more, and you stand there and say, we need to look at best value? We've got nothing left and this is why we have more children going into care, we have less opportunities for young people, we have more crime. But I'm, I'm, obviously I'm going to agree with a lot of people and this Tory government the last thirteen years being an absolute disgrace. But, but looking at the last four year of the administration, the independent Lib Dems, councillor Knight and Gill started with, we've invested in Loftus, Isborough, Redcar, no mention of Greater Eston in your speech. And I was looking at what the last administration, the last Labour administration had done, just some examples, we had invested in Eston Square and we had hoped that the four point nine million and was, was coming, obviously further investment into Eston Square. But what we also did is we invested in Low Grange Farm and that's Tesco and that was other retail units, that was hospitality, it was Skipper's Lane, so we have B and Q and all the units on Skipper's Lane. We invested in South Tees, we invested in housing in Eco Village, we demolished lots of houses that were obsolete, we created a health village. We've done a lot for Greater Eston. I'd like to know what this administration has actually done in the last four year. The backs haven't arrived yet and we're really pleased. And I, I can always say as well that we're proud that we did invest across the borough. We didn't just invest in Greater Eston, for I think Greater Eston in this administration has been really let down. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Pallister. Councillor Barnes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As cabinet member, I've been named, been mentioned by a number of councillors about their disappointment about what is happening in children and families. Can I first say that there is no more passionate advocate for children and families than me? We are forced into a situation whereby, because of increasing costs, because of children coming into care, because of poverty, because of deprivation, because of all these things, then, then the number of people who need our help, the number of families who need our help is growing exponentially. However, we are aware of the fact that there are some areas which we can look at with a view to trying to save some money, our non-statutory services, and of course, you know, there are very, very few of them. Councillor Jeffries and councillor Colley referred to the youth services and councillor Quatermain. The youth services are really important, I couldn't agree with you more because if we put money into those, then early help, as it's classed as, will hopefully save more in the future, but it's non-statutory. So therefore, that's an area that we need to look at and we can look at. What we are doing is that we are doing a review of the youth services and it's distinct possibility that some of the youth centres may be amalgamated with some of the family hubs to try and cut down on costs. Turning to family hubs, we've just recently received a grant of over two million from the government, which is to be spent over the next three years. We have to put our plans in by June, so we're in a very tight schedule. And we have, currently and have looked at, the, we're going to have a consultation about the family hubs, but we've also looked at them in a huge amount of detail to see which of those hubs are being used, whether they are being used by the wards which need them the most and to also elaborate that the, the, the actual people, the actual children that these, these hubs are going to be used for is no longer naught to five, but has gone from naught to nineteen, so there's going to be all sorts of consultations on the services We have been told that the funding that's coming in will be for eight family hubs, we currently have eleven. In terms of school crossings, again, very important, however, once again, it is non-statutory. And so there was never any decisions made and never any implications even to actually cut the service. What we did propose was to actually consult with schools to see if there was any mileage in having a, a, a level agreement with them. That has not been done yet. However, again, because it's non-statutory, it's one of the few things that we can look Going on to the items which councillor Watts mentioned. She says that I didn't give her any response to the email that was sent out. That's in fact inaccurate. I did send an email out on the twenty-third of January, which I sent to all councillors and in there I gave links to the budget proposals, two of them, both the family, the children's and families link and the overall budget link. She's also mistaken in relation to my mentioning of holidays, I never said that and in fact, I have actually listened to the video recording and I didn't say it, so I'm afraid councillor Watt, you are mistaken in that. As councillors know, councillor Watt sent to every member a series of suggested savings for our non-statutory services. I have to say again that within that, there are several inaccuracies. The savings that councillor Watt suggests are, first of all, an amalgamation between the edge of care service and the intervention team. She says that there is an overlap between them, that they are very similar, no, they're not the same. When a referral meets the threshold, it is assessed and may fall into several categories, from a child in need, which is the lowest, via a child protection plan and ultimately to a child in care. Edge of care, as the name suggests, is where there is a potential for the child to move from a child protection plan to a child in our care. The edge of care team give intensive support, including family group conferencing and other interventions to avoid this happening. We don't want children to come into care. Apart from anything else, it costs us an absolute fortune and in terms of the benefit for children, it's much better if they can stay with support within their own family. The intervention team sits within early help. If there are early indications of worries from school, for example, or the families themselves, then the family will be offered help. This help can only be given with the consent of the family concerned. That is non-statutory, I agree. The other serving that is mentioned is to do with the short breaks for children with special needs. Councillor Watt states it is within the remit of foster carers to take children placed in their care on breaks or to local attractions like any other family and gives the listed costs and suggested that the expenditure is put on hold. Can I just point out that this is not specifically for children in our care, but for any parents or carers of children with disabilities, it is statutory and is under the guise of the Breaks for Carers of Disabled Children Regulations two thousand and eleven. Another area that councillor Watt suggests is Tuned In. Tuned In has activities for young people every night, also different events, for example, pantomime theatre groups, concerts, et cetera. I believe it is still under the original use restrictions, so we couldn't either sell it nor lease it out for office space.
Councillor Barnes, I, I've been more than generous in the time allocation.
I have finished now, thank you very much for your consideration.
Excellent, I was going to ask you to sum up if I can, thank you. Okay, we don't seem to have any other councillors wishing to speak in the debate. You aren't listed councillor Ovens? Well, okay, I will allow it, councillor Ovens.
Just to endorse the need to have finances in children's services and adult social services, which does not always just cover the elderly, is often the, a little bit of a concept around that. We do have an aging population, most of our, the work we do is under statutory guidance, so we have no option in providing it. And we, we also, as I said, we know that we have an aging population and in proportion to other authorities, immediately nearest like Missus Bingleyman, we have a greater number. We certainly would never want to be in the position of, well, we just couldn't turn anyone away, just wouldn't do that. So funds have to be found, and a lot seems to take up a disproportionate part of the council tax. The problem with not going with the budget is where on earth do you make the cuts? Where we would not be in this position of not being able to look after our most vulnerable residents. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ovens. Councillor Nightingale, would you like to sum up, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll try and respond to as many people as possible, assuming I can read my own writing from what they actually said. I think several key issues will come out of this. I think one of them will be about balance between services, financial sustainability, and the cost of laying and the impact on council taxpayers. And also about what alternatives people are proposing. And of course, I think we've done to death the issue of government grant. Let me start with, let me start with councillor Massey. Obviously, very sympathetic, disappointed that can't vote for the revenue budget. And again, the issue there is about financial sustainability and the balance between what we're trying to achieve across the board. On the Eston precinct issue, I think it's a bit more complicated in the way that we've got the money available. And I think he knows that, I think several other people may know that too. In, in the case of councillor Watts, I think councillor Barnes has mentioned this. But I want to point out to a lot of people, the, the fees and charges issue is not part of this budget except for the income that we speculate being generated from it. Councillor Wells talked about the pressure on residents. It doesn't provide us with any alternative, and he talks about the efficiency that's necessary. And I did mention that over the years, we have actually made a hundred and twenty-three, sorry, sorry, begin again, twenty-three million pounds in, in terms of efficiency savings. And obviously, there's going to be a need for, for more. But it doesn't provide us with an alternative for not voting for this budget or presumably wanting zero council tax. I think, I need to point out as well about fees and charges while, while we're on this, although it's not in the budget, that it is a continual process and it will be looked at. And I can, I can assure people that those people are concerned about parking charges. We will be doing all we can to make sure there's a coherent policy across the borough. That is assuming that we are re-elected for control. Yes, councillor Clark talks about the government being let down, and mentions London and so forth. And again, the car parking thing I've just mentioned. Again, you know, what's the alternative budget that he's going to produce? Councillor Halloway about the inadequate fine of family businesses. Much more of the impact on family, sorry, family incomes rather, much more of the impact on family disposable income is coming from inflation and costs that people face and energy bills and so forth than what we're actually proposing in our, in the increase in council tax. Sue Jeffrey, I presume, is actually advocating an increase in council tax. And some of the points that she made clearly shown to be inaccurate by councillor Barnes. And some things are statutory, some things are discretionary. And she mentioned the, the business rate issue. She seems to imply that she's got more information about the future economic prospects of the area and the decision-making of businesses than the people who are providing the information for us to provide a reasonable estimate of the income in the future. And there's also that, well, I better not mention this, the accusation of potential corruption. But it's not, it's not part of the, this administration that she's talking about. Another point as well, I want to make as well, I absolutely refuse to be painted into a corner of being a right-winger or some sort of person who wants to cut, cut services to people. That's quite the contrary. And I, I do resent the implication that's been mentioned there. The, can't even read the writing of someone here. Yes, councillor Corley says we should be shouting at the government to get something done. We will. Councillor Turner presumably is also advocating a five percent council tax increase. And of course, that is part of the government's position. And she also hints at the prospect that she must know more than we do of the prospect of local government organisation. And I don't think anybody here wants to go through the costs that are involved in, in doing that. Oh, Philip Thompson makes, councillor Philip Thompson makes the most cogent and coherent case that I've heard this afternoon. And I do compliment and thank him for his wise words and for his support. And he mentions what we must do in the future. And I think I can wholeheartedly support almost everything that he's actually said there as well. And the whole, the whole point he makes about unpalatable decisions, the fees and charges revisit, the politics of election, and we all know what that refers to. And that we are actually thinking about the, the public and the consequences of voting this down. And a recognition that our social services for adults and for children is now taking up so much of the budget, and much of it is what we cannot say no to, as I said in my earlier remarks. Councillor Quartermaine seems to imply that we're cutting the services of the borough. And that is absolutely not, not true. And councillor Pallister talked about the time before the credit crunch occurred in 2007, when, when the Labour Party was in, in power. I deliberately didn't mention one of the projects in Greater Essendon because it's a bit too close to home. However, in conclusion, let me just point out, Mr Mayor, that the, sorry, I also made a mistake when I spoke. I understand when I said 1.9 council tax percentage increase is actually 1.99. So I stand corrected on that. Again, the, the question really is for people to decide here today whether they want to increase council tax and tell us where the money will come from. And if it's coming from reserves, reserves are already stretched and are in a difficult situation. And it would not be the wise decision to make. Those who want to cut council tax have got to tell us where more efficiencies can come, where cuts in services are going to come from what they're saying, and also what it is that there is in terms of running a business that is, is different, or the same rather, as running the council. I've always said that the council should be business-like, but it is not a business. We have statutory things that we have to do. We have to do things that are not what businesses do. And we are a public authority here to do things for the general benefit and welfare of the public. Finally, Mr Mayor, I want to make it quite clear, like any budget, this budget is not set in concrete. We have to put figures in in order to work to during the coming year, and we'll do all we can for that. I hope people will remember that it's events that have affected what's happening here and what the government is doing. It's events outside our control, and we have very little control over what the government does. But I thank people who are going to support us today because you are the responsible councillors, you are the rational councillors, you are the people who are making the difference for people in this area to have the longer term future of council services provided by Redcar and Cleveland Council.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. There will be a recorded vote on these budget proposals, and I will now hand over to the managing director, John Sampson, to conduct that vote. John?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As the mayor has said, approval of the budget as set out in section two of the report, and hence the proposed increases in council tax and the adult social care precept is via a named and recorded vote. When I call out your name, councillor, I am looking for one of three responses, for, against, or abstain. If I miss you on the roll call, for whatever reasons, I will return at the end to pick you up. Councillor A. Councillor Baldwin. Councillor Baldwin, sorry. Councillor Barnes. Councillor Berry. Councillor Brady. Councillor Brook. Councillor Corley. Councillor Clark R. Councillor Clark B. Councillor Craig. Councillor Cutler. Councillor Doughton. Councillor Fisher. Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Foggo. Councillor Gallagher. Councillor Gray. Councillor Halloway. Councillor Head. Councillor Hickson. Councillor Holmes C. Councillor Hollyork. Councillor Hunt. Councillor Jeffrey G. Councillor Jeffrey S. Councillor Jones. Councillor Care. Councillor King. Councillor Lanigan. Councillor Laxkeeler. Councillor Lockwood. Councillor Massey. Councillor Moody. Councillor Morgan. Councillor Nightingale G. Councillor Nightingale I. Councillor Ovens. Councillor Pallister. Councillor Quartermaine C. Councillor Quartermaine L. Councillor Rees. Councillor Richardson. Councillor Ryder. Councillor Salvin. Councillor Smith-Sandra. Councillor Smith-Stewart. Councillor Smith-V. Councillor Thompson. Councillor Turner. Councillor Waterfield. Councillor Watts. Councillor Wells. Councillor Westbury. Councillor Wilson.
Councillors, can I have your attention, please? The results of the vote are thirty votes for, ten against, and fourteen have abstained. So the budget is carried. Thank you. And we'll move on to our final agenda item, which is the pay policy statement, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And I will again hand over to councillor Nightingale, who will move this agenda item.
First of all, thank you to the thirty who voted to support the government. I'm very grateful to them. The government, yeah, 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 right. Right, this is the, this is the pay policy statement, and I think we can have considerable consensus right across the council for this. It's part of the Local Government Localism Act, and it's about our pay arrangements, the gender gap, which actually is in favour of women by, gender pay gap, that is, in favour of women by about ten percent, and about arrangements for pay awards for staff in relation to holidays. And this was part of the settlement that was made last year for the one thousand nine hundred and two, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five pound increase across the board for all council staff in the country. But it also involved equalising holidays. So some members of staff will now have another day's holiday. Finally, it deals with the Redcar and Cleveland Council's minimum wage supplement, which is to match the real living wage. And, and there are, in the, in the documents, you can see the whole series of details about the living wage, the differences in pay and the pay policy. So far, the pay for next year has not been agreed. The, just as a point of information, the unions were claiming two percent above inflation. And so that is possibly likely to be something that any future administration will have to deal with, Mr Mayor. But I commend the pay policy for the council's approval.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. Do you have a second to that, please? Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Councillor Massey?
Not to elongate this too long, but I just thought I'd point out some wonderful things in the pay policy statement, including kind of the raise of the minimum wage supplement, and also the fact that we have a positive gender pay association, which, just, the only reason I said this is because I was reading this this morning. Today is the day in the annual calendar where women earn the same as men for the rest of the year because for the first fifty-four days of the year, until February twenty-third, women work for free. So it's glad to hear at Redcar in Cleveland that's not the case, but I endorse the report.
Thank you, councillor Massey. We have no other speakers that wish to speak, so a show of hands, please, all in favour of that, please? And that is carried. Thank you, councillors. You're pleased to know there's nothing else on the agenda, so I will close the meeting. Thank you for your attendance this afternoon.